Okay, Colleen. You ready?
That's right. Are we ready? Let me turn my recorder on first. The meeting tonight is for conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you, Colleen. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom and for our first responders. Thank you.
We just want to see you carry it.
Yeah, we're gonna skip it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, though, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carry. Motion to approve minutes from the November 25th, 2019 town board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Authorized payment of bills in the amount of $72,116.83. Need a motion to pay the bills.
Move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carry. Comments on the agenda? Any comments on the agenda? None being said. No presentations, but I'd like to go up. This is a public hearing is open. Still amending the zoning map of the town of Marlborough to establish a business. So, yes, so it's a public hearing, amending the zoning map of the town of Marlborough to establish a business quarter overlay district. And this has to do with the old con freezer on 9W. So if anybody has any statement or would like to talk about it, it's according to our section of our code 155-12H. As you know, it starts at the building department. From the building department, it goes to the town board. The town board sees all the different, I guess, everything that just about with the planning board sees as far as maps and stuff like that. And then after the planning board sees it and approves it, it comes back to the town board to do the overlay zone. So...
Is there a question?
We do not. So I'd like a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved. So Patty, the resolution is on the agenda, as you know. We don't. You could go home. It's a miserable day.
That was quick.
Wow, thank you. I was not expecting that, so much appreciated.
Not a problem. You're welcome. Have a safe trip back and Merry Christmas to you.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Yes, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
At least this ain't snow out there. It made it all worthwhile, right, Gail?
Right there, Gail.
My supervisor report is here. Okay, we'll go to reported departments and boards. First up is a is the supervisor's report. So I attended the annual Veterans Day ceremony, just like a couple of board members. It's well-attended. Really appreciate that. I had a joint informational meeting on equalization rate with the assessor Cindy Hilbert. Councilman Baker was there, John DiMarco representing the taxpayers of Marlborough, representatives from ORPS, and the Marlborough School District Representatives. All I could say is, it's complicated. I think you really have to go to school and get a degree in, what do you think, how?
It is complicated.
The equalization rate, how they come to it.
Yeah, that's, the history is complicated.
Yep. Also attended a conference call with Chief Kukosa, Councilman Corcoran, Budget Director Chris Wilco, and Attorney Dave Weiss to discuss the PBA contract. Attended town planning board meeting, met with New York State DOT representatives, UC, Ulster County Planning Director Dennis Doyle, Planner Jack, how you say his name, Georgie, Georgie Jacklinmark?
Jack Martin.
Jack Martin, yeah. Councilman Baker, Senator Scoofus, Assemblyman Jacobson to discuss the Route 9W paving project. They're gonna pave 9W, and they're gonna do a few small things as a safety thing in Marlborough, but they're not gonna do anything much more than that. We're very disappointed. But it's a paving project. They got the monies to do it. It's six point some million, right, Howard?
Yeah.
And by any means, we're not gonna hold that up because of our study, but we would've liked to have done something. So maybe during the tap, when the tap comes out, we'll apply for the tap for some other things. Marlborough Trail Meeting with Tony Falco, Matt Kirsten, Councilman Baker discussing the Milton Landing Pier. Actually, it was the, we didn't really discuss that, I'm sorry. So that was another thing. First of all, let me clarify. We met for the trail. You wanna talk about that, what the decision was that we discussed?
Briefly, the discussion there on the Marlborough Trail was to refocus our efforts, not so much on the Latent Town Creek Trail, but creating a trail on the Tilcon property itself and focusing on that. And we're, because it's just much more straightforward and much easier, we think. So we would have to discontinue the grant that we were going on and apply for another grant for just the Tilcon Trail, and we're in the middle of doing that. And Greenway knows about our intent at this point, so.
Yeah, so we did the letter stating for the Greenway, Scott.
Keller.
Keller. And we sent that letter off. And then the discussion was to do a grant for the Tilcon property, what would be needed. And they would like to see, we have a 10-year lease, they would like to see at least a 25-year lease. So we're in talks with Tilcon now about that. And then the next thing was I, it was a discussion on the Milton Landing Pier and Councilman Keenick, Jerry and Rosemary Wine, and representative from Titan Bond. That was to go over all the other conditions. And Titan Bond was here last week, two weeks ago, and discussed that. And we went ahead with the awarding of the project. Met representatives of the town highway department, Councilman Corcoran, to discuss drainage issues. So I think because of the snow, we were held up on that, but the consensus was to get ahold of Pat Hines and go out there. I think John Alangi and Gary were gonna go out there with Pat.
We did send something to Pat, right? It was sent to him?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So the discussion was that Pat was gonna get ahold of John and get a couple of dates going and go and check out the different drainage districts. Attended a UC Transportation Council meeting in Rosendale. That was very informative. I got them to put on the agenda the Milton Landing cross, at grade crosswalk, crossing. So that was good. Additional conference call with Chief Kukosa, Councilman Corcoran, and Attorney David Weiss in regard to the PBA contract. Mr. Weiss will be here later on to talk to the board. That would be in an executive session. Attended Milton Hamlet Business Association tree lighting. That was excellent, Alan. Thank you very much. And so we'll go to the next building inspector, Thomas Corcoran.
Building inspectors, Building Department, monthly report, November 2019. Certificate of occupancy, four. Request for information, 17. Building extensions, five. Fire inspections, eight. Fire calls, one. Work stop work orders, one. Complaints, 26. Orders to remedy, nine. Burn permits issued, 12. Building permits, eight renovations, one barn, 12 burning, one commercial, two decks, six demolitions, one electrical, one boiler, three roofs, one shed, four tank installs or removals, for total permits of 40. Estimated cost of building, $3,000,032,136,000. Monthly revenues, certificate of occupancy, 600. Permit extensions, 93850. Building permits, $15,093. Request for information, 1,700. Fire inspections, 725. Burning fees, 40, for a total monthly income of $19,096.50.
Any questions?
Sorry. Total gas uses, 68 gallons. Total miles, 1,101.
Any questions for Tom? We're okay now with Tom back? Did you go back and inspect that to make sure that they took everything out of the closet and everything was?
Closet's clean. The rope is down. We probably might want to have some type of structural engineer take a look at that truss and make sure they haven't compromised it in any way.
It's actually an I-beam, right?
Yeah.
It's pretty heavy-duty.
There's a beam there, yeah.
Yeah. We could have that done.
Yeah, somebody should look at it and just confirm that it's okay and sign off on it.
Sure.
Since they drilled into it.
Yep. But everything's back to your satisfaction? Okay?
My fire satisfaction, I would say, okay.
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief.
Okay. Monthly report for the month of November 2019. Motor vehicle accidents, personal injury, 10. Fatal, zero. Property damage accidents, 36. No accidents, accidents that didn't require report, zero. For total of 46 for the month. Vehicle traffic summonses, 203. Parking violations, nine. Lottery entries, 597, with 13 total arrests. Telephone calls handled, 1,705. Full-time dispatcher overtime, 12.5 hours. Part-time dispatcher overtime, 26 hours.
Holidays.
Police miles for the month, 13,283 miles, with a fuel consumption of 1,147.828 gallons. Like to remind everybody, December the 12th, 6 o'clock is the blue light ceremony, right here in the lobby at the police station. Also, I'd like to thank the town board and the town for last night's meeting of the souls. It was a great time. And I also wanna thank Highway for, and the town, for getting the tree out front. It's got its lights and stars. It looks pretty at night.
It looks beautiful.
Thank you very much for the help.
Yes. Thanks to Scott, we were able to get the both trees. They were actually pretty large trees, but we cut the, just the tops off, so it worked out great.
It was the perfect-sized tree. Whoever thumbed it was perfect.
Jerry should've been near. That tree was 25 feet in the air.
Could imagine.
I got some of those if you want 'em next year.
Yeah, and the best thing was, it was free. It was a donation. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Jerry.
Thank you, Chief.
I know we talked about this before, and I think we all thank you for the detail on the crosswalks. Are we gonna do any more, or that was, could you just remind us again? How successful was that?
Well, most of these tickets, oh, not most. A large part of these tickets are a result of the crosswalks. Now, we only did, we only wrote violations to vehicles that failed to stop for the pedestrian, the crosswalk. We did not ever get to, strictly because we've used all the money that we had available, to doing the pedestrian jaywalking side of it. However, the new grants are in and will start, actually, they start at the end of October for the rest of '19 and '20. So we'll reallocate some of that money for the pedestrian side of it, probably springtime.
And this was for both crosswalks?
We did, yes, we did the one by Pizza Town on two occasions, and on two occasions, we did the one in front of the Philly Cheese Steak Place.
So...
And both were very successful. Downright, people drive off the side of the road to drive around the person that crosswalked. These people are now starting to come to court, so we'll see what, how that comes to fruition.
Okay.
A mixture. A mixture. Yeah. People really just don't know that
They don't know the law.
They should stop. Yeah. Literally, I watched them do the detail a couple times, and the officer was literally stepping off the double yellow line, say he was going westbound, stepping off the W O line. And the people were literally driving almost on top of the sidewalk to drive around them, when indeed, they should be stopping. Rather than stopping, they drive around. And they were doing it in both directions.
They probably gave him the finger, too, but...
They were not happy.
Right.
A lot of people argued, you know, am I supposed to slam on my brakes?
Happened to me.
You get hit from behind, you know. The law's clear. If someone's standing in that crosswalk, even if they're not over the white line, but they're standing in the crosswalk as if they wanna pass, you need to stop. Plain and simple.
One of the things we learned, maybe we knew this before, but at that meeting with the DOT is, and we did mention this before, they are moving that crosswalk
Yes.
to the corner there. And they are putting those flashing lights. I know they have a fancy name for them, but...
Right.
So that...
Right. I think part of that decision was driven off the complaint that we filed with the DOT.
Right.
And the resolution that the board passed in reference to that. I think that's why they decided to incorporate, although I've never gotten an official letter from that investigation, but the results are what we wanted in the new paving system. So I'm happy with it. The only issue we're gonna have at that crosswalk is site distance. Site distance coming from, from the north going south.
The only way to solve that is to knock that raised...
See, what they're gonna do is they're gonna extend the sidewalk, so this way it's the vision, you could actually see the cars coming from the north.
Sticks out a little.
Since this is an official documented meeting, you're gonna see people running that curve over. You see people now
I hope not. Let's see what...
You see people now striking that cement wall.
Well, let's see what DOT does first.
That's my prediction. Let's put it in writing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We got it. We got it on video. Thank you.
And run over that, they're gonna move the...
Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler. Would you like to come in? Give you a report, or you just?
I can read it. Want me to read it?
Yeah.
All right, Gail, I'll read it.
We have it, Gail, so... It's no problem.
Let me scroll down. Here we go. All right. All right. Monthly report, November 2019. Roads, due to wind and rain storm, we spent 100...
Excuse me, Alan. Colleen, could you put that up on the reports, please? Go ahead, sorry.
Due to a wind and rain storm, we spent 11:1 chipping and removing branches and debris from numerous town roads. We continue to do blocktop repairs throughout the town. Removed and shipped a fallen tree on Buckley Bridge spillway. Drainage, cleaned ditch lines on 11:12 on Bailey's Gap Road. On 11:15, opened up drainage on Green Tree Road. On 11:12 and 11:26, we did catch basin cleaning. During the second and third weeks of the month, we cleaned all leaves and debris from all ditch lines throughout town. Sidewalks, the first week, we did finishing touches on new sidewalks on West Street, and we applied topsoil, grassy, straw, and mulch. This ends this year's sidewalk project. Brushing weeds, spent the month doing miscellaneous chipping along the roadways. On 11:15, we assisted De Lorenzo Tree Care in removing a tree on Hillcrest Drive. Snow and ice, on the morning of 11:19, we had a snow event that we had to send trucks to Salt Roads west of Latent Town Road. On 11:25, we treated various spots on Mount Zion Road, Mountain Road, and Reservoir Road. Water Department, on 11:07, we insisted the water department with the new water tap installation on Ridge Road. We also did blocktop repairs for two water main breaks from last month, and also repaired with blocktop the Reservoir Road pump house. Fuel use, gas, 207.114 gallons. Diesel, 968.886 gallons. Respectfully submitted, John Alangi, Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Thank you, Alan. So first of all, I'd like to recognize Mr. Appeler and the audience. He's retiring this year. 20 years, a great, great job. I can't really tell you how much the town appreciates all your hard work and your dedication, Gail. So from myself and this board, I know everybody probably wants to say something, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to serve with you and, you know, to be your friend over these years really meant a lot to me. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, too.
I would add to that, Alan. I just think you have probably the best highway department in the county, if not southeastern New York, if not the state. So, and that's all due to your vision, Gail. So we really thank you. Should be proud of what you've done.
What impresses me the most about Gail is his knowledge, his knowledge. People don't understand how much knowledge this man has of what drainage issues are, how to fix drainage issues, and the knowledge of knowing the law, of who's supposed to fix the drainage issues. And I know he's had some good heated arguments with some citizens, but I think in the long run, I think mostly every time, he has been correct. And he has been doing that for the betterment of the taxpayers of this town. So I've been, always enjoyed working with you, Gail, being on the board eight years. I've never came to you, and you've never said straight out no to me. You said, "Let me think about it." But for the most part, you've always done pretty much anything that this town board asks of you, and I appreciate everything you've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail.
I just add to that a little bit, too, is I had the pleasure to actually work for Gail 20, probably, oh, man, going back 20 years, maybe, now, '98, somewhere in there. He hired me for, I was, had my beverage business, and was always friends with Gail and his boys, but I had an opportunity to work for him and to see how he is as a boss and who he is as a boss, and to learn from him how to be a boss. Gail inherited a highway department that was in need, I would say. I was at his party, his, you know, celebratory, he's the highway superintendent party back at the firehouse, and, you know, he's, he invited me and his boys down to see the equipment and see what was at and what was down there. And he didn't have a lot to work with. And sure enough, he got the equipment changed around, and he got the, you know, the right equipment in there and the right times, and he, you know, he placed them correctly. But not only that, what he does with his crews is, Gail sends his guys to Cornell School. He sends them to the Roadmaster Program. So he's got a smart crew, and his crew is dedicated to him, and it's, he's just, you know, he's the epitome of what a good boss is and good manager is. So congratulations, Gail, on your career, and I hope you look forward to your retirement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Can we get a picture with you, the board and...
Sure.
Hey, we're politicians.
Photo op time, Alan.
Well, maybe not though, Wes. We might have something else to play.
Let me get it first in my head.
Thank you. Forgot to say, every time we had our budget meeting, I could use another person.
Could use a what?
Charlie.
Every time we had our budget meeting, I could use another person.
Monthly report for November. Our water consumption totaled 15.2, 15.250 million gallons of water, which is a daily usage of 508.3 gallons a day compared to last month, which was 17.514 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 565,000 per day compared to a year ago, which was 14.7 million gallons for the month, which is a daily usage of 490,000 per day. Water mains, we had to repair road cuts, which were caused by water main breaks. With the help of the highway department, hydrants, we repaired and replaced snow markers. We had to drain some hydrants out for the winter. We also had to rebuild hydrants on Mahoney Road. Service lines, we installed and we inspected service line on Ridge Road with the help of the highway department. Curb boxes, we had to repair curb boxes on Plattekill, Western Avenue, and Shanghai Hill. We had our annual health department inspection. Service line inspections, one. Closing, six. Markouts, 35. Gallons of gas for the month, 235. And the mileage for the month was 1,850.
Any questions for Charlie?
No, just the health department inspections, they went fine, or you haven't the results yet?
They, they just do an annual inspection to see if we have any violations or anything that we've done wrong. And so far, there has been no complaints.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thanks, Charlie. Colleen?
Town Clerk, monthly report for November 2019. Burn permits, one, for $85. Conservation, 14, for $101.78. Dog licenses, 14, for $90. Transfer station permits, two, for $130. Punch cards, 19, for $970. Marriage licenses, one, for $17.50. Building department fees, one, for $11,225.55. Fire fees, one, for $1,920. Zumba, one, for $400. Accident reports, 24, for $120. Certified copies, two, for $50. Fire requests, one, for $4. Police fees, one, for $15. Train station fees, one, for $300, for a grand total of $15,428.83.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions for Colleen?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So wastewater treatment. This is for the month of November. Both Marlborough and Milton wastewater treatment plants complied with the speediest requirements, except for the removal of total suspended solids, following our monthly statistics for both plants. The Marlborough WWTP, average daily flow is 128,000 gallons per day, about 73% of design capacity. Average BOD removal is 92%. Average suspended solid removal is 67%. Permit requires at least 85% removal for both. Milton WWTP, average daily flow is 34,000 gallons per day, about 62% of design capacity. Average BOD removal, 92%. Average suspended solids removal, 81%. Permit requires at least an 85% removal for both. The low effluent suspended solid percentage removal was the result of low-influent suspended solids and the bacteria change over into aeration system. This is typical every year during the change to colder temperatures and should turn around quickly. Both systems showed good BOD removal, the quality of the influent... Both systems showed good BOD removal, the quality of the influent now seems to be improving. We do not expect this issue for the month of December, please contact us with any concern. And that's Julian Falco. Okay. You wanna read the dog control there? Scott?
I got my reading glasses, I'm getting old. Town of Marlboro Dog Control Report, Andrew McKee. Month Report, one, eleven-one to nineteen to eleven-thirty to nineteen. Overview, we received a total of fourteen calls this month, including five calls to service from the Marlboro PD. State Police and Ulster County Sheriff responded to four active complaints in our cases, which are now closed or resolved. We currently have one open case that had been addressed but are ongoing or unresolved. We impounded zero dogs this month, there were zero dog bites reported this month, we currently have zero dogs in the kennel, we have zero cases at the Marlboro Justice Court at this time. I would like to remind residents to please keep your pets indoors within the winter when you are not home. There were a number of calls regarding lost dogs where owners were not home and therefore unaware the dogs were lost. Thank you, Andrew McKee.
Thank you, Scott. Assessor Cindy Hilbert, report.
Okay, we prepared two property tax estimates, we processed twenty-eight real property transfers, we continue to work on collecting our new construction and verifying our sales data. We had mailed out our exemption renewal applications and are processing them as they come in. End of report.
Thank you. Howard?
Yep, Planning Board Review, November 2019, meeting November fourth, 2019. Attendees were Chris Brand, Manny, Cindy, Joe, Ben Tripaney, and Joel Trumcalli. Agenda, the first item was angle Six Pretty Avenue, Marlboro, Sketch and Line Lot, I assume. The applicant proposed to combine two lots, which were previously subdivided in 2007. The planning board determined that this was a type-two action, and resolution of approval was granted unanimously. Second item was Royal Energy, one sixty-six Route 9W Milton Preliminary Site Plan. Town Engineer Pat Hines reviewed the project's SWPP and found it to be acceptable. The applicant presented architectural drawings for the project. Board Member Lanzetta requested photo simulations of the project we presented at the next meeting. Letter from the town code enforcement officer was received regarding the size and placement of propane tanks on site. The applicant will return for the November eighteenth, 2009 meeting for secret determinations and approval determination. Next item was Dan Scammerhouse, five West Street, three King Street, Marlboro, Sketch Line Lot. The applicant is seeking to combine lots, each of which is presently situated in different zoning districts. The applicant was advised to present an amended site plan for the previously approved home occupation usage for bed and breakfast on West Street. In order to bring the newly created parcel into conformance, the applicant was additionally advised this amended site plan would require a public hearing. Next deadline is Friday, November eighth, next scheduled meeting, November eighteenth. And then the next meeting's minutes, attendees Chris Brand, Manny Couchy, Steve Clark, Cindy Lanzetta, Joel Afara, Ben Tripaney, this is November eighteenth meeting. First on the agenda was Royal Energy, one sixty-six Route 9W Milton Preliminary Site Plan. A seeker, negative declaration and notice of determination of nonsignificance was passed unanimously. The project was granted approval via resolution. Next item was Brooklyn Bottling, Nine River View Drive, Marlboro, revised plans and site plan. Verbal approval was given to the applicant to make minor technical revisions to their previously approved site plan, which will be indicated on maps submitted for sign-off. Next deadline, Friday, December, November twenty-second. Next scheduled meeting is Monday, December second, 2019, respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, Chairman Town of Marlboro Planning Board.
Thank you, Howard.
You're welcome.
Yeah, guys, I'd like to bring up, make, make a motion that we go into executive session in regards to police department contractual discussion.
I need a second on that.
Second that.
So we're going to, into executive session, probably, I would think about a half hour, maybe a little less, right, David?
You never know.
You never know. You never know.